To regular city council meeting. And I'm going to ask the city clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Long.
Present.
Counselor McLaughlin.
I know he's here. I thought I saw.
I I see him. Counselor Renian.
Here.
Counselor Richardson.
He waved. He's here.
Okay. Counselor Randall said he might be a little late and Mayor Mays.
Present. Yes, Council Randall has called and said he'll be a little late. So knowing that he will be here shortly, we'll go ahead and get started. Item three is Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like this Counselor Long to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. Item four is the approval of the agenda. The agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? Counsel Richardson, seconds? It's been moved by Counselor Long and seconded by Counselor Counselor Richardson to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
I see four yeses. So thank you very much.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Item five is Proclamations and Presentations. We have one presentation today, tonight, from the Executive Director of Main Street, Tori Davis. Tori, I know you're here. Oh, there you are.
Thank you.
Yeah, the floor is yours. Please proceed and welcome.
Thank you very much for having me. Main Street has successfully been reorganized to better serve stakeholders' needs. We are pleased to announce that we have a seven-member working board. The board consists of Jeff Adams, Jared Sawyer, Crystal Kruger, Anthony Prera, Chris Sukin, Herman Myers, and Cody Carpenter. We are continuing to build a coalition of volunteers and partners to enhance economic development in the Dallas. We are communicating with urban development in Mid-Columbia Economic Development District to create a portfolio that Main Street will use to attract investors, entrepreneurs, and tourists to do business in the Dallas. One of the ways we are going to accomplish this this mission is to ensure that our scope correlates with the City of the Dallas 2040 survey. Main Street has used their social media platform to spread the word. Main Street is also gearing up to establish internships and academic partnerships for prospective business students such as PhD student Nicole Coward. She will be helping us formulate metrics for our portfolio as she works on her thesis. Main Street is continually evaluating how our organization can identify ways to promote events in the Dallas. And it was shocking to us that multiple school administrators stated just how thankful they were for Main Street reaching out to them to provide students with the family fun events that we have, which apparently few organizations do. So we would encourage organizations to throw their family fun events to reach out to the local superintendents and school administrators and get the children involved. With that said, Main Street is proud to say that we have formed strong connections with 18 schools throughout the Mid-Columbia region and have served more than 16,000 flyers promoting events in the Dallas in two months, and it's working. Main Street conducts surveys at our events and found that one in every eight customer is from out of town. The good folks from the surrounding areas also noted that many more would come if the bridge was not closed. Main Street is committed to increasing economic development, and we are pleased to say that we have thrown seven events since our last conversation in September. We are very proud of our volunteers, board members, and partners that accepted the challenge and willfully took on such a demanding pace, such as our friends at the Senior Center who helped celebrate Scott McKay's retirement party for his executive director role. In addition, we had our trick-or-treat event, which one business owner counted 1,000 visitors. We also had two downtown Santas, Downtown Santa Claus, our second Wild Dog mural teaser event, and our newest event called the Downtown Country Festival, which is the first time Main Street has reached out to promote and partner with some of our region's ranchers, farmers, and the Dallas Raiders Club. Our agriculture and farming industry is a staple in our community, and we cannot wait to grow this event into a regional success. Main Street has four active grants now, which are the last stop, the Dallas Grenada Theater, Google Grant for Wild Dogs, and the Pedlet Program. That means upward of $390,000 is being put right back into the downtown business district. As for the Parkly Grant, it is near completion pending destination ready's acceptance of our report. This will add four more parklets that will become available in early merch to help increase speedification and outdoor seating in our downtown business district. Thank you, council members and our mayor for giving me the opportunity to share about Main Street's progress.
Thank you, Tori. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Tori? I'd just like to say that I attended their board meeting last week, and I was very impressed with the new board that has been put together for Main Street. They were going through some strategic planning exercises while I was there. And as I said, I was really impressed and I'm very excited about Tori being on board and Main Street contributing and becoming a viable part of this community and especially the downtown. So thank you very much. I noticed Jeff Adams is here. Jeff, is this the same Jeff Adams that's on the Main Street Board? Yep. Okay, great. Welcome, Jeff, and thanks for your participation and your volunteering. Thumbs up. Great. Okay, anybody else? Anything else on this subject? Okay. Item six is Audience Participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Five minutes per person will be allowed. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the city council for up to up to five minutes? Please speak up or give us a raise your hand. Anybody? Okay. Last call. Okay, thank you very much. Item seven is the City Manager's Report. Ms. Kruger.
There we go. I'm not in charge of my mute button anymore. I do not have anything specific to report tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you for that short report. City Council Reports, first would be Counsel Runyon.
Really? Okay. And I said I'll send you a list afterwards. I, like many of the other counselors, maybe all of them participated in the tour of the land that would be involved in Google's development. That was a week and a half or two ago. Also attended the Wasco County Lipstick Meeting, Local Public Safety Coordinating Council during the last week or so, and a Q Life Meeting. Also met with a National Veterans Group on some issues that pertain to us here locally as well. A couple of other things here. Swearing in of Officer Carrie Call for the Dallas City Police, one of two new officers here, but she was the only one able to attend the swearing in. The other one, I don't have his name right in front of me. He was out working already, patrolling the city, and we're really glad to have them both aboard. Had a short meeting with the police chief about some downtown. I'm not sure what to call it, but it's being handled. It was a new resident on our sidewalk. Also met a little bit with our city manager Julie this morning and Alice Cannon, our Business and Economic Director, and with Tyler Stone from Wasco County, the Administrative Officer, and a quick phone call with the mayor. And one city counselor today just happened to run into each other in the same building. And did a little survey this morning on city issues with a local coffee group at about 7:00 AM this morning. And that was interesting to get some a different impression of how things look to some other people, business people and otherwise. And that's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Next, Counsel McLaughlin.
Well, I attended the Airport Commission Meeting in December. The only thing of note was the runway lights have developed an issue with the controller board and the replacement cost could run as high as $10,000K, $10,000 in the worst case, but they're working with Dean Roderick in order to find some possible solutions. I attended the Wasco County Commission Board Meeting last week. It was a Zoom meeting. I had also attended along with the Counselor Runyon, the swearing in of our officer Carrie. Received a text from Brian Jarrell this morning from, he's a representative of the Azelin family that owns property in Dallasport that is the possible site for a golf course and housing development. We'll be meeting in the near future, and he just called in to make connections. So I just want to let you know about that. Shout out goes to Donnie Lewis, a local volunteer that is picking up stolen shopping carts and returning them to the rightful owner. Thank you, Donnie Lewis, for your service to our community, keeping our city safe and clean, one shopping cart at a time. And last but not least, a very happy birthday goes out to our very own Counselor Rod Runyon. That's my report for tonight.
I brought a cupcake. Excellent.
Counsel Runyon, would it be okay with you if we weren't, did not sing happy birthday?
That would be very acceptable. I can I can give you my rendition, the lion rendition. I think I'll hold.
Yeah, I've heard that, and I think we'll forego that as well.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Runyon. Counselor Long.
So, yes, like Counsel Runyon said, I did attend a visit out to the property that Google is donating to us, took a look at that, and I've just been meeting with various citizens and attending my regular plethora of meetings. That's the update I have.
Thank you, Counsel Richardson. Can I ask the city clerk to please unmute? Counsel Richardson, please. There we go.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything to report right now.
Okay, Counsel Randall, who has joined us.
I don't see him, do you?
No. I thought I saw him. I guess it wasn't him. Okay.
Time, but he's gone.
Pardon me?
He came in, but I can't find him now.
I thought I saw him too. Well, if he wants to give a report, he can always let me know, and he can give it then.
There he is. He's waiting to get in.
No.
I did the unmuting for him. Counsel Randall.
There he is.
Always got to unmute himself again.
Do you hear me now?
Yep, Counsel Randall, you're up to give your report.
I have nothing to report other than car problems.
Okay, as far as I, as far as the mayor goes, I attended a couple of things that have already been mentioned, the 35-acre tour out at the Google property and the county board meeting. So with that, we'll move on to Consent Agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the important items and issues. Any council may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the Action Items section. We have three items on the consent agenda. We have we have the approval of the December 6th work session that the city council held in regards to the recruitment for the new city manager. We also have the approval of the December 13th regular city council minutes. And the third item is the approval of my appointments of Jim Wilcox to the Airport Board and Maria Penya to the Plan Commission. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Randall. I'll second.
It's been moved by Counsel Richardson and seconded by Counselor Randall to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 10A is is to approve contracting authority with a consultant to support our police department's accreditation application. I'd like to turn it over to our police chief, Chief Tom Worthy, Ms. Chief Worthy.
Yes, Ms. Mays, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure. I just unmuted. This is a contract to support the effort to accredit the City of the Dallas Police Department. It's with a professional services corporation called Ranit Healthcare Consulting. For anyone that's concerned that it's a healthcare consultant, they provide general business support and project management services, which we'd like to avail ourselves to, to drive the accreditation process forward. The person has skills and abilities that will aid us in that regard. The contract not to exceed amount is $65,000. And again, I'd like to remind the council that this is all funded and supported through a federal COPS grant through the Department of Justice with no match to the city. So it's spending federal money for its intended purpose. The actual value of the contract will be about $54,900. The added 17% leeway is in case we would like to shuffle around that budget or reapportion money that we don't need for other areas that it was budgeted for, such as training or travel. We may not need those depending on how the course of the accreditation process works. And I'd like to be able to have that leeway to move that money into business support if we need to. The intent is to spend about $54,900.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions by the city council? Counsel Long.
Yeah, I didn't see in the staff report how you selected this particular consulting firm. Were there others that you considered using the city's contracting rules?
Yeah, so initially, we had thought to perhaps bring on limited-duration staffing, and that wasn't available to find anybody who could meet the criteria for the job. This is a person who is known to the department and has inside knowledge of our, essentially, our records management system, which will be required to provide proofs of compliance for many of our areas of accreditation. So it's a good fit for the department as a whole. And, you know, the city has knocked out in the contract as well, where if it doesn't work out for whatever reason, we can we can depart early. But that was a process that we used, essentially trying to find any support services was a challenge in the Dallas. And we did want somebody that was local in the community and could be on scene for in-person meetings as much as possible. So that was the process that we went through in selecting this person. It's also somebody that I know who has worked on other grants through Kenny LaPointe's organization and other grants in the law enforcement community here in the Mid-Columbia region. So it was a good fit. They speak the language of the grant folks and have the particular skill set surrounding project management and business process delivery that we're looking for.
Okay, so they're definitely not an employee.
No.
It's a contract. They provide everything. Okay.
Any other questions of the chief? Counsel Runyon?
No, that actually answered the question I had, but there were other organizations out there that do the same kind of work. Thank you.
Chief, I noticed in the staff report you said accreditation will ensure best practices and policy training and more. I was just wondering, especially for the benefit of some of the people in the audience, if you could be a little more specific on the benefits of accreditation?
Yeah, so accreditation is a growing trend in law enforcement in Oregon. Many agencies are moving that that direction. It's outside evaluators coming in and taking a look at our practices, our policies, our training, our procedures, the way that we run our operation. We're provided with a set of proofs that we can go through, which is very, very long and time-consuming to do. And then we not only have to show that we have a, for example, a policy that pertains to a certain process, but then go into our records management system and say, here's a report that demonstrates our compliance to that policy and follow that type of a process. So it's a top-down, inside-out, outside-in, look at the department. It's both broad and deep. That's why we need the business process support and the business management support to accomplish that, because it's can take up to a year of work. So for us to do it correctly and follow the best practices guide that's been provided by the Oregon Accreditation Alliance, it's going to take a lot of attention. It's going to take a lot of attention to detail to get it done correctly. And we want to do it right the first time. And as a part of the statement work attached to the contract, I've asked the contractor to set us up for ongoing continued accreditation. So we'll look forward past the end of the contract with deadlines, updates, and those things to help us enable continued accreditation beyond the length of the contract. So it's a it's a forward look, and it's a look at the department as a whole. It's something that you're going to hear a lot more of in the future, I'm sure.
Thank you very much. Counsel Runyon.
Just when I finally digging through here, found where I made my notes at, Tom. Did you say in your explanation that you thought the amount to be spent was $54,000? Or did I miss?
It's about $54,900 is what we're we intend to spend, but we want the leeway up to 65 as a do not exceed amount in case there's additional funds available within the grant only to expend towards that service if we feel if we feel like we need that down the line. I just don't want to have to come back for a modification if we don't have to.
I got you. And when this was all done, if we have spent that amount or less, the balance says to be returned to the grantor. Is that correct?
They don't want the money back. They prefer that we spend it. That's the intended purpose of those funds. And so by giving us that leeway, you know, we can we can put that money to work for its intended purpose. And ideally, we'd spend 100% of the grant and not a penny more.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
Mayor Mays, I'll go ahead and make the motion then. I'll move to approve contracting authority for the city manager to execute a contract in support of accreditation.
I'd like to second that, Counsel Runyon.
By Counsel McLaughlin and seconded by Counsel Runyon to approve the contracting authority for to execute a contract in support of accreditation of the police department. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Good luck. Item 11A is a discussion of the Strategic Investment Program Community Service Fee Distribution. This is Matthew Klebs here.
Yes, Mayor.
There he is. Okay, Mr. Klebs, please introduce yourself and continue with the staff report, and I would like to conduct this like I do most of the other discussion items. I'd like to have Mr. Klebs give the staff report. After that, I'll open it up for questions from the city council. No discussion, just questions. Then I'll open it up to the public for any public comment or questions, and then we'll move it back to the city council for discussion and a deliberation. So, Mr. Klebs, please proceed. Thank you and welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Matthew Klebs. I'm the Administrative Services Director for Wasco County, as well as one of the Enterprise Zone Managers, and I've been involved with this SIP agreement since its beginning. Before you, tonight is my staff report summarizing the current status of the SIP agreement as well as the dynamics of what we're specifically going to be focused on tonight, which is the community service fee, where you'll hear me reference it as CSF. And this community service fee or CSF is set by state OAR and ORS. And I'm going to start with a brief summary, and then we're going to take each section of my memo point by point and walk through the particulars. And so in essence, there are three points for consideration that staff is looking for direction from the council on, in which the memo, as I said, has been organized accordingly. And in essence, that the first is a process for determining distribution of the community service fee for each project, or how do we go about reaching a decision? The second is the recommended methodology that the city would bring to that determination process. Or in other words, what is the city's opinion on how we should distribute the CSF? And then the third deals with a potential loan to Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue to provide resources needed to support services during, in particular, the construction phase of the first project, which is also connected to the community service fee as part of staff recommendation. And we'll dive into a little bit more here in a second. And so, as I said, we're going to take each one of those in turn, but before diving into those three main points, I want to cover a little bit about the community service fee itself and the status of the SIP agreement. So the community service fee is a component of the state-created SIP program and is based on a formula or a calculation. It is computed as a percentage of tax savings each year of abatement, capped at a maximum of 2.5 million. And so that's the formula the state has prescribed that we use in determining how much in a particular abatement year a community service fee would be. The tax savings of the company are calculated, and they must pay a fee that's equal to, as I said, 25% of that savings, but no more than 2.5 million. The actual amount of taxes saved each year may change due to actual levels of investment or depreciation schedule. So this formula is used annually, and the numbers may come in different every year. The state allows the distribution of this fee to be decided locally via an agreement that must be made within 90 days of Business Oregon's approval of the SIP agreement. Or if there's at least substantive process or progress being made, we could request an extension of Business Oregon. And I want everybody to note that Business Oregon made a final determination on our SIP agreements on December 17, 2021. So 90 days from now puts us out to March 17, 2021, 2022, excuse me. It's not the first time that's happened in the new year. So that's kind of the timeframe that we're looking at. And a key point in determining the distribution of this fee is what entities are specifically involved or are a party to reaching that agreement per OAR and ORS. And I want to be very clear that these are the entities set by the state that are party to determining the distribution of methodology. These are the the entities in taxing districts that are involved in that decision. And those entities are the City of the Dallas, Wasco County, and certain taxing districts that are listed specifically in ORS 198.010 and ORS 198.190. And those local taxing districts listed in those ORSs are Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue, Wasco County Parks and Rec, the Library District, Board of the Dallas, 4H, Soil and Water Conservation District, and the EST. Now, per those ORSs, an agreement needs to be reached again between the City of the Dallas and Wasco County and 75% of the total levy of those listed districts. Not 75% of the number of districts listed there, but 75% of their total levy. And these fee dollars and the the distribution methodology that would be reached may be distributed again to the county and the city as well as any local taxing district that levies taxes on the property where the as well as any local taxing district that levies taxes on the property where the development occurs, as well as it may be distributed to any local organization or program that quote, "provides a relevant and significant community service even without taxing authority." And so I wanted to start there and give you that brief summary of what the community service fee is, how it's been set up and defined by the state, and what is left open to us as part of that local decision-making process. And so starting to get a little deeper into my memo, we start with the community service fee determination process. And as I said, this is very open. It's left for local discretion and decision within the timeline I mentioned previously. And the negotiating team's recommendation is to first solicit input from all of the taxing districts that levy taxes at that development site. And following that solicitation of input, to organize and call a meeting with two representatives from the city, the county, in each of the taxing districts listed in the ORS. So there's a distinction there between all of the taxing districts that levy taxes at the development site and the districts specifically listed in the ORS. And so that two-part process, first beginning with that solicitation of input from all of the districts, and then a meeting to review the information that's been gathered and reach a decision would be part of that next step. Now, I have to make a correction in my memo. There's an error. Part of the recommendation was that at that meeting, we would reach an agreement on how to distribute Project One's community service fee, and that we would agree to wait until agree to wait to reach agreement on Project Two's community service fee. And the rationale behind that is Project Two could be several years in the future. And we may want to wait and make that decision a little bit further down the line. I received some additional information, some clarifying information from Business Oregon last week that informed us that that is not acceptable and that we'd have to reach agreement for the distribution of both Project One and Project Two's community service fee within the timeline I was just talking about. One possible option is to model the distribution of the community service fee of Project Two after whatever we end up deciding for Project One. And I will stress that these distribution methodologies can be amended or changed through a similar process or a process to be determined down the road. So it doesn't lock us in. We don't have to make this decision in ninety days and lock us in for the duration of of these agreements. And so to reiterate, this is the proposed process that staff has developed to facilitate reaching an agreement amongst the taxing districts involved in that decision-making. And staff is looking for your support and consensus on this process at tonight's meeting. The second portion, second main component of my memo is the recommendation of the city and county to bring to that process. So what methodology does the city council support? And city staff is looking for direction on to bring to that process I just described. And it is the negotiating team's recommendation to apply the methodology of distributing the community service fee proportionally to all taxing districts in the tax code area of the development site. Not solely those districts that are involved in the decision-making process, or those districts that are only listed in the ORS as well as the city and county. Now, finally, the last portion of my memo involves a loan to Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue. If an agreement is reached for distributing the community service fee to all the taxing districts as recommended by the negotiations team in contingent upon final agreement from McFerr, it's recommended that a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan be made, be finalized and funded equally from the city and county to support Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue's ability to provide adequate services to the development site, particularly during the construction period of the project. So in part, this support is needed because one of the other components of the SIP that the council is aware of is that a certain portion of the development is is taxed. Those are these three different levels of taxation based on the ultimate level of investment, and that's part of our SIP agreement. But that tax base, that those tax dollars are only generated once the project is completed, not during construction. And so McFerr would be required to provide service during construction, during the projects when the buildings are being built, but before those additional resources are available. So that's some of the rationale for the loan. This loan would be tied to the initial payment, again described in the SIP agreement that we have and was approved by Business Oregon in December. And this initial payment is a three million dollar payment to the city and county that's tied to the groundbreaking of each project. So three million dollars for Project One and three million dollars for Project Two. And so in other words, the funds for this loan would or could come from the initial payment made to the city and county when the project has its groundbreaking. And Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue would then pay this loan back over fifteen years. So again, to summarize, there are three components again to the discussion and decision tonight. There's the process for soliciting input and facilitating a conversation to reach an agreement. The city direction to staff on what methodology to bring to that process. That's not a decision we will reach here tonight. We need direction from city council for city staff who attend that meeting and to bring that methodology for discussion there. And the loan to Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue. So we're looking for consensus on that process and an action giving staff direction on the city's recommended methodology and an action on the on the proposed McFerr loan contingent upon the recommended methodology. I've included in the memo some potential motion language that could be used. That is always the council may modify or provide alternative directions to staff on each of these components. And I will also note that some of the language in the draft motions I've included in my memo will need to be amended to incorporate the change for Project Two's community service fee. So that last sentence in the first memo, first motion will have to be stricken. I'll be presenting the same topic and memo and and recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on January nineteenth with the same objectives. And with that, I will pause there to answer any questions that you may have.
Matthew, I've I've got three real quick things just to clarify. The meeting with the county board is the nineteenth. That would be at nine AM, right?
Yes, I don't know if we're on the agenda for nine AM, but that's what time to know.
Okay, secondly, when you talk about Project One and Project Two, you're you're talking about the construction. Project One is the construction of the first data center, and Project Two is the construction of the second data center. Is that right?
Correct.
Right. And then McFerr, of course, that refers to Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue.
Yeah, I caught myself on that one. Thank you for making that point. Columbia Fire and Rescue. My apologies.
Okay, with that, we will open it up for questions from the city council. We'll get the discussion after we hear public comment. But does anyone on the city council have any questions of Matthew about his report?
One quick one. I'm looking at my own property tax statement here, and I'm coming up with twelve taxing districts. Is is that correct, Matthew?
I am not sure about your particular tax bill.
So it may be different depending on where you are in the community.
I believe I believe so. If we have some specific questions about the the tax bill or anything that we may have, I believe Jill Amory is on the call as well, who could help, but it it may differ from person to person.
That that was the point I wanted to get out there. Thank you.
I believe we have the same, probably in the same area in the tax bill, and I count twelve taxing entities, if but eleven if you don't count urban renewal. So. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Cleaves?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matthew, a couple of quick questions. It reads, or maybe I'm reading between the lines in the memo, that there was there's a negotiating team's recommendation for how the CSF would be distributed. Were there other options that were discussed on how to distribute, or was the recommended approach sort of just, you know, arising to the top and and finding sort of consensus quickly?
So we we looked at what other communities have done with distributing their community service fees. And there was a there was a range of simple splits to percentage distribution amongst very different taxing districts. There wasn't a kind of consistent methodology that 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 we came across. And I think the method, the recommended methodology that we reached at was intended to, you know, provide those resources to all of the different taxing districts who provide services throughout the community. It was also based on having it be based on their tax rate was a good and consistent methodology to use going forward. Business Oregon will be looking for that specific methodology to be submitted to them. It seemed like a good rationale to use.
You're saying they are familiar with this one and would be most likely to approve that. But we could come up with essentially anything we felt, or a majority of the levying districts of those eight districts could agree on.
Right. I don't I don't believe I didn't intend to say that Business Oregon would approve that distribution that we reached. We have the ability to reach that decision locally ourselves. And then we would submit that methodology to to Business Oregon. If we don't reach agreement, that's when the decision can go to Business Oregon.
Understood. Thank you.
Counsel Richardson, can I clarify something with Mr. Cleaves?
You bet.
Is it, would you say it was fair to say that one of the very serious consideration was distributing the money according to, quote, "the greater good," end quote, and not distributed to the taxing bodies? But there was also a recognition of the requirement that seventy five percent of the taxing districts had to vote in a favorable and vote favorably for such a for such a a direction.
Correct. And that's that one provision in the OARS and ORSs where those funds can go to local programs or or projects that serve that kind of greater good, as you said, Mayor.
Right. Sorry to cut you off there, Dan. I just wanted to make that clarification.
No, I appreciate it. I don't know if this is a question or a statement, so or how best, you know, whether you want to hear this now, but I guess I have questions about the proposed loan insofar as this is the first time it's been made, I believe, public. The the request has been made public, and it's rather scant on details, you know, why? You know, what's the need and what would it be going for? I feel like that would be helpful information, and I don't know that's necessarily on you, Matthew, or or not, but that is sort of a an area I'd like to see hashed out by somebody somewhere. And the other thing I would like to say or have a question about rather is with regards to the process, do you foresee or are you proposing, Matthew, that the the various districts, each sending two members to a meeting to hash out an agreement would take it back, take the proposed agreement back to their respective boards and councils? Or do you are you proposing they would have the authority to just make the agreement, write up the memo, and call it good?
Now, I believe the the vehicle of the mechanism to memorialize an agreement that was reached would be through an IGA, which would come back to each council, commissioner, or board for approval. So that's an excellent point, city councillor. In terms of the timeline that we have here, albeit, as I stated, I believe we can request additional time if we're making substantive progress, but to solicit taxing district input, prepare for the meeting, call the meeting, work on the IGA, and bring that back for approval. You know, we'll take time there. So that's, again, one of the reasons we have brought this before you today in kind of this three-part, one-memo setup to get this direction and feedback from you.
Thank you. No more questions.
I hate to put people on the spot, but I noticed that Chief Bob Palmer is here from the fire district. I was wondering if the chief would like to comment on Counsel Richardson's question about the about the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the need for it. Chief, would you care to comment, or we can move on to another counselor question? There you are. Would the city clerk please unmute Chief Palmer? There we go. Can't hear you. Why don't we move on to other questions? And then, Chief, if you can figure out a way to unmute yourself, we'd certainly like to hear what you have to say. Okay? Okay. Other counselor questions? City council? Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to ask a question or provide some input? Mr. Nichols, Isetta, could you please unmute? Right, here we go.
Okay, a clarification, please, from Matthew. Is I understand that reading the memo, you're suggesting that the taxing districts get proportional shares based on their tax rate, except for the portion having to do with bonded indebtedness. Is that correct?
Yes. Sorry, I was checking to see if I was muted.
No, that's fine. I just just wanted to understand that. Thank you.
And urban renewal, correct, Matthew?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments from the public?
Mayor, you have one up. I don't know who that is.
Travis Dre?
Good evening, Mayor Mays and city councillors. Travis Dre, Director of Business Development for Mid-Columbia Medical Center. So appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all just real quickly regarding the Strategic Investment Program.
Mr. Dre, could you give your address real quick? Thanks.
Absolutely. Thirty-one ten Old Duffer Road. So just just asking a question, also just proposing a possibility, maybe paralleling what Councilmember Richardson was referring to, and just just requesting the possibility to explore other projects that may be greater good, where they can, there's leveraging for economic impacts, additional capacities for care in our community. I understand the efforts that have gone in from the negotiation team, but potentially there are some other projects out there that are maybe worth a deeper dive and a look to really enhance our community and look at some game-changing opportunities that may be on the horizon. So I appreciate the time, and if there's any capacity in the process, I know you have a short runway that Mid-Columbia Medical Center can lend any assistance at all. Please do not hesitate to reach out.
Thank you, Mr. Dre. I would like to point out that no matter what happens with this community service fee, which we're discussing tonight, there are still opportunities that have yet to be decided regarding the initial fee that Matthew alluded to before, three million dollars for each of the two data centers. And the the guaranteed annual payments which come into the community by virtue of the negotiations. So. And also, we expect all the taxing bodies to get some additional revenue, tax revenue off of these negotiations and additional tax revenue by virtue of the first data center becoming coming online. So there's certainly, I'm not going to say there's ample funds, that's in the eye of the beholder, but there are a lot of opportunities for the distribution of these monies pursuant to what Mr. Dre is implying, so which which I think he is talking about the greater good. Okay, any any other comments or questions from the audience? Chief Palmer, I think we certainly would like to hear what you have to say. I can only suggest that we go on with the meeting. And if you find a way to unmute yourself, I'll allow you to interrupt the meeting and speak your piece. Is that, I mean, that's all I think we can do.
If he's on a laptop, he might have bumped.
If he's on a laptop, he might have bumped um, like the F nine key, which is a mute button on the computer itself.
Check your F nine button? Nope. Any more suggestions by anybody?
Um, is, he may want to try, may try, may want to try leaving the meeting and rejoining. Uh, sometimes there's a prompt that indicates joining the meeting with computer audio. Sometimes people uh, don't click it, uh, especially if they don't talk for, you know, forty-five minutes into the meeting. So it could be worth trying.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um. We'll move back to the city council, uh, for city council deliberations and comments at this point. Uh, does any member of the city council have anything they'd like to say or ask at this point, um, regarding the distribution of the community service fee? I'd also like to point out that the uh, two county commissioners are with us this evening, uh, Mr. Steve Kramer, who's a member of the negotiating team and the new presiding commissioner, Kathy Schwartz, and also the um, the uh, chief executive officer of the county, Tyler Stone, and the attorney, Kristen Campbell is here, I see too. So welcome to you all, our partners. Okay, city council, any discussion?
I have a comment.
Yeah, council long.
Yeah, so I just want to say that um, I have been a proponent of this particular type of distribution. Um, I know that with the first couple of agreements with Google, even though they were structured differently, some of the taxing districts uh, missed out on opportunities because we, we did use the greater good method for that. And I think that this is a lot more fair to some of the smaller districts and I'm, I'm happy to see that this is how we're doing it this time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council Richardson.
It's Mr. Mayor, uh, just two comments. One is that while I would support distribution that includes all of the taxing districts, perhaps with the exception of the urban renewal agency, but definitely to include the school district, I would say um, I'd like to have some confirmation that, that uh, if we go that route or if the uh, negotiators decide to uh, recommend that route, that funds that go to the school would not be uh, essentially lost due to the state funding formula. So I would say let's, let's put a marker in that and get some resolution or an answer. The second comment I had, would have is um, I have no particular uh, well, knowledge yet, uh, given the lack of details about the, the loan request from the fire district. So I have no, you know, real opinion about that. Um, but in addition to seeing, uh, needing to see some details for that request, um, before I definitely could render an opinion, I'd like to see it decoupled from the discussion or the negotiation over the funding uh, dispersment uh, formula. It's a separate issue.
Yeah. Um. Let me ju- I'd like to have Mr. Cleaves answer your first question about the school, uh, the school uh, taxes and as it relates to the state aid formula, but uh, Chief Palmer has, has, has provided the negotiating team with a lot of details as to their need for the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and additional personnel. And even though he can't, doesn't look like he might be able to speak tonight, I'm sure he'd be willing to, to uh, to um, rewrite that, that memo uh, pursuant to Council Richardson's question and just, we can get that distributed to the city council. Would that be okay, chief? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Cleaves, do you want to address the issue of the um, these, uh, the, the property taxes as it relates to the school aid formula?
Certainly. It, it is certainly something that we can, we can triple check and confirm. Um, but the uh, school district, as we all know, is, is uh, funded in part through a statewide funding formula. And so um, what distinguishes the community service fee resources from taxes is that very nature of it is a fee dollar, not a, not a tax dollar. And so um, the city uh, and the county under previous enterprise zone agreements have taken those fee dollars and dispersed them to the school district under previous agreements. I believe it's on the Google agreement, the, the Design LLC Enterprise Zone Agreement from twenty thirteen. And those funds uh, do go to the school and I do not believe that they affect their uh, funding that they get from the state. Um, I've had conversations with their finance director over there a- about this and having that pre- precedent makes us feel uh, confident that that can be done again. Uh, but to Council Richardson's um, point, um, triple checking that is, is certainly something we can do.
Thank you.
Okay, any other council member would like to make a comment or ask more? Uh, Council Runyon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, Matthew, going over the, the fact that, or maybe it's a factor, maybe it's negotiable uh, with the state, you're saying that uh, the second project has to be included in this initial agreement. It cannot be delayed for a later discussion by the city and county?
Correct. Um, the distribution methodology for project two must be reached within the timeline that we've discussed, although I, I, as I have added before, I believe we can request an extension, uh, if we're making substantive process. Now, the methodology for each C S F can be different. They don't have to be the same, but not frankly, not being able to uh, predict the future when this project two's community service fee may be generated several years down the line. And our ability to amend that, um, uh, if needed, um, kind of brings one to the possible conclusion that modeling the distribution of the second project after the decision, the methodology we reached on the first one may make sense. Um, so I know that was a little bit a long-winded answer, but um, yes, we have to reach uh, methodology agreement on project two in the same timeline and it can be the same as project one or different.
Or different. Okay, but it all has to be done by the same timeline, so to make it different, uh, would create a, a little bit of a, a problem in timing, I would think, uh, due to some agencies don't meet as often, they'll say we do or the county does. Uh, they would have to have some special meetings and so forth. Uh, the other thing I wanted to ask about, um, you know, and I've said before publicly that having been involved in a number of enterprise zone events, I would not do another one of this size again, and, and I was really pleased to do the SIP where we have taxing districts uh, participating right away, although if I had my druthers, I'm wondering in the discussions with the negotiating committee and I've kind of wanted to get this out there for those listening uh, in the public that have the same question. There was, there was some push for having the community service fee, aside from the taxing uh, entities that'll get their money uh, every year during the tax process. Having the community service fee be a, for the greater good piece and I'm one, wondering if that was in the negotiations and when did that change or become that the C F, C F F would also be divided out through all the taxing districts? Does that make sense with that or not?
I, I believe so. So um, I think to answer your question, yes, um, using these community service fee dollars for greater good type projects uh, was also one possible uh, methodology we could use. Um, as uh, Council Long, uh, Long mentioned a moment ago, for many of the um, enterprise zone dollars, we uh, allocated those to projects that may not have been able to be done otherwise. Um, and uh, through the conversations that we have, and I'll stress, um, the city council tonight is not making this decision. But is directing staff on what methodology you support to bring to that conversation. And that uh, conversation could again happen uh, at that uh, meeting with the other taxing districts.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering how it progressed and I'm happy with this and I'm glad, uh, even though the state staff doesn't necessarily uh, include the schools district, I am glad to see that in there as well and I hope that uh, stays together as you've recommended.
Council Long.
Yeah, so I just, um, I guess it'll be posed as a question to Matthew. I think it might answer Counselor Richardson's uh, question or hesitancy toward the loan uh, to the fire district. Um, at the bottom of page two, that last paragraph, and then carrying over to page three. Um, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan is not in addition to C S F funds for the fire district. It's, you could think of it like an advance on what they're expecting to get and then it says they're going to pay it back out of the um, future C F S funds. And so it makes sense to me because they're going to, we don't tell other taxing districts what to do with their funds, but the fire department needs to provide that service now before the C F S funds come in. And so by loaning, agreeing to loan to them, they can get the equipment and provide the service uh, a- ahead of time during construction phase. So it's not in addition to, it's just uh, ahead of time when they actually need the funds to provide the service.
Matthew, do you want to answer that? Clarify that or, um, I see Tyler Stone has his hand raised. Um, go ahead, Mr. Stone.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councillors. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Now, I just uh, checked with Bob, um, and we were a part of those negotiations. Um, and that seven hundred thousand dollar loan will go to bring on six additional employees or two per shift in order to move them uh, uh, towards better meeting the NF P A uh, fire protection standards. And that would start immediately. And so, y- you know, they're not likely to see uh, funds coming from the project until the project has already started and, until the project is completed. And so by loaning those dollars out of the initial fee, they can start um, recruiting for and adding that staff there. And Bob uh, said that he would follow up with more details around that for the city council.
Thank you, Tyler. Um, Council Long, did you feel like you got your question addressed?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Cleaves, are you uh, recommending that uh, you've, you've made a recommendation on the suggested language for a motion? And uh, these would be two, it is your intent that there would, you know, of your memo that that would be two separate motions?
Correct. That was the first, um, a- again, um, yes. So to kind of, to again, go back, we'd be looking for consensus of support from the council on the process I described to reach, to facilitate this conversation and engage the other taxing districts uh, to reach a decision. And we'd be looking for direction or an action from the council to staff on what the city's supported methodology would be to bring to that meeting. And then a separate one for uh, the loan to Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue contingent upon that first agreement.
Okay, so if the city council is in agreement with your suggested methodology um, for getting input from the taxing districts, we don't need a formal motion. You're suggesting that you just get a consensus of the council? And then, correct?
Go ahead. Yes.
Yeah, and then if that goes okay, um, we would then entertain a motion uh, pursuant to your memo which starts with mo- move to recommend distribution of project one's community service fee, blah, blah, blah. And then a separate motion to address the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar loan.
Um, my o- my only comment there would be on the first motion language, we would have to strike um, the recommendation that distribution for project two C S F be determined when project two commences. That additional information from Business Oregon I received last week, that will not be acceptable.
Mr. Mayor, do we actually need a motion? Can we move by council consensus to whomever we will be sending to the negotiations?
Could you? Could you clarify that, please?
So my question is, do we need a motion? In your opinion?
To re- recommend the distribution of the community service fee be distributed to all the taxing districts? Is that what you're asking?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Kara.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. To answer Council Richardson's question, it appears that this has been presented as an action item on tonight's agenda. And so um, a- at the very least, um, if the council still wishes to, or actually any member of the council, it seems, may move any item from the agenda uh, to become an action item. But if the council wishes to amend the agenda as presented, we can push it back to make this a discussion item to provide informal consensus. I only say that with the caveat that I, I'd like to hear what uh, Matthew Cleaves has to say about whether he needs an official uh, vote, but that's all.
Matthew?
Yeah, and I believe my comment there would be, um, if city, city staff have uh, received the direction that they need to bring the council's um, uh, recommendation or consensus to that meeting, that may be sufficient.
We would prefer to have a formal motion that gives us clear direction to move forward for those meetings.
Uh, that answers, is that okay, Dan? You got? I get the, I guess the.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, so. The first question is, do we have a consensus on the part of the city council to seek input from the taxing bodies as to the distribution of the community service fee? Okay, I see.
Yes.
Notting heads, I see.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, you have that consensus, Mr. Cleaves. Now, on the motion, Matthews, uh, bear with me here, uh, I would say we would strike the, the last sentence of the first motion and and say, um, move to recommend distribution of project one and project two's community service fee to all taxing bodies, so on and so forth.
Correct.
Okay, does everybody understand what I just said? Okay. Do we have a motion to recommend distribution of the two projects, community service fee to all the taxing districts as presented and as, and uh, remember, if you make the motion, do not read the second sentence.
I can do it.
Council Long.
A move to recommend the distribution of community service fees for project one and two to all taxing districts in the tax code area, consistent with the sum of each district's permanent and local option rate authority, whether used or unused, but excluding the levy slash tax rates for bonded indebtedness.
Council Runyon, seconds.
It's been moved by Council Long and seconded by Council Runyon to approve the motion. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye. McGlaughlin, aye. Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the second motion is regards to the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar loan and starts with the words contingent upon approval of the recommended distribution. Would anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor. Um, I move the contingent upon approval of the recommended distribution method of the project one and two community service fee by taxing districts. I move to approve a loan to Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue in the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars from project one's initial payment to be paid back, but to, by, and Mid-Columbia rest, Fire and Rescue over fifteen years and direct staff to finalize an agreement and promissory note for signature by the mayor, by the city manager and the county administrator, administrator.
Thank you, Council Randall. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
All right, Tim.
Go ahead.
I'll go with Council McGlaughlin since Council Long or made the motion on the first one. So it's been moved by Council Randall and seconded by Council McGlaughlin to approve the motion to loan seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to the fire district with a contingency as uh, described. Council Runyon, do you have a question?
Yeah, just uh, under discussion, uh, in the middle of that, uh, the loan seven hundred fifty thousand from project Yeah, just under discussion, in the middle of that, the loan $750,000 from Project One's initial payment, I believe, was read. Should it have said one and two, since they're tied together or not, just to be clear?
No, just not, just the first, initial fee.
Thank you very much.
Okay, there's a motion, a second on the floor. Is there any more discussion?
Hi, Mr. Mr. Mayor, I would just, I guess I'm the Scrooge of the bunch, because I don't feel like I'm ready to vote in favor of this, having not seen the memo or detail spelled out. I feel like we're awfully free, maybe, maybe we feel it's not, not real money and that it's a kind of found money, but I'd like to, personally, I want to see the memo from the fire district and have some time to cogitate on it. Again, I think this is a, you know, it's, it's not something I'm opposed to. Just something that I'm not really had time to, to learn about or, or think about, and it seems that it ought not be coupled with negotiations. I'm opposed to coupling it or thinking that it's part and parcel of those negotiations. It's, it's a separate issue.
Mr. Cleaves, is there any problem with separating, although there's been a motion and a second? So I think we're obligated to vote on that unless the motions are withdrawn, but do you see a problem with delaying the second motion to a later date?
Before I answer, does Counselor Long have a comment?
Go ahead and answer first, Matthew.
So the, the previous motion was a recommendation or direction to staff to go through that process. The results of that process will come back to city council for approval. So I, I don't see an issue with not deciding tonight as we still have that entire process to go through and to bring that IGA back for approval.
You're, Ms. Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor Mays. It is a separate motion, and I believe that intent of this would contingent upon approval means that we wouldn't proceed with this direction until the city council had the opportunity to come back and approve it what we come up with. So I think it's, I think that was the reason for saying contingent upon approval of the distribution method. It, it gives us time to get back to the city council with all the recommendations, and we can provide that information to the council.
And that would be, that would come before us when we discuss the, when the council actually votes on the legal document, is that right?
Yes, I believe we have, we have tentatively scheduled that for February 14th, council meeting.
Okay, Counselor Long?
Yeah, I was just gonna try again to clarify my understanding that the second motion would be in case we did a different distribution based on the first, that the fire district, in that case, if we went with a greater good scenario, might not have the $700,000 coming as their portion of the CSF. But if it does go forward, then that is a part of what they're expecting to get. The request for the loan is just so they can get the money, their portion of the CFS early, before the construction is completed, because nobody else will get their CFS money until it's completed. But they need that money now to provide the, the fire service. So essentially, they're asking us to let, loan them the money so they can hire the people that they need now, and it's not a free gift, it's not on top of the CFS. They're gonna pay it back with their CFS money when that money is available to them. So if we told them how to spend it, that would be akin to them coming and telling us how we spend our portion of the CFS money, which, of course, they're not going to do.
We hope.
Well, understood. I, I understand as much has been written in the memo clearly. And yet, I don't see the need for us to, what feels to me like rushing into this particular motion. I'd say there's no harm in, in letting the district have the opportunity to spell out the case, given that we're both public entities and, and being public with what this transfer of funds would be used for is, is all to the good, in my opinion. So again, I, I see no purpose in linking these. I suppose someone who has had a more Machiavellian cast of mind might even say we'd be giving up a fair amount of leverage if we linked these for the negotiations. So again, I would prefer to wait and vote on the, on the loan until having read a memo or, or some, you know, some document outlining the plan from the fire district as we've already talked about.
Well, there's two ways to go here. Either the two people that made the motion can withdraw their motion, or we should, we can proceed with a vote.
Mr. Mayor, I wish to proceed with the vote.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I can't re, I know. Ms. Grossman, could you remind me who made the motions?
It was moved by Randall and seconded by McGlaughlin.
Okay.
So you'd need Randall to read back.
Okay, it's been moved by, moved and seconded to approve the language for the loan to the fire district. Is there any more discussion? Okay, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote. Ms. Grossman, please call the roll.
Counselor Long?
Aye.
Counselor Randall?
Aye.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Aye.
Counselor Runyon?
Aye.
Counselor Richardson?
No.
Okay, motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Cleaves. And again, we'll be addressing the issue of this loan when the formal document for the loan, which is being drafted as we speak, comes before the city council in February. Okay, item 10 or 11B?
Okay.
This is an ordinance amending the city's land use development code. This was discussed at the last city council meeting, I believe, and I'd like to turn it over to our senior planner, Ms. Don Hurd, Ms. Hurd.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilors. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen right now. I don't know if you all can see that.
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So just a little recap, the proposal that you're looking and hopefully voting on tonight or deciding is consideration of proposed changes to the municipal code amendment is to expand the permitted uses in the commercial general and commercial and industrial zones to allow shelter housing, which is also defined as established and seasonal shelters as permitted uses that are subject to proposed standards. Again, all properties that are located in the commercial general and commercial and industrial zoning districts would be included in these amendments. At the December 13th, 2021 meeting, city council conducted a legislative public hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment and made changes to the code. And during that public hearing, findings were discussed and are included in the public record. In addition, the public was given an opportunity to comment. Upon closing the public hearing, city council discussed the request and the planning commission's recommendation. Council agreed with the majority of the planning commission's recommendations, recommendations at the close of hearing. However, there were two modifications to that proposed code amendment that were directed by council to staff to make changes. The first one is for established and seasonal shelters in the commercial general zone. Seasonal shelters were removed from conditional uses in the CG and two uses that are actually permitted outright, so that both of them would be allowed for permitted outright in commercial general as well as commercial and industrial. And the second change was that the bathing facility requirement was removed for both established and seasonal shelters. So in addition, staff plans to return to council in the spring of 2023 to revisit the commercial general modifications to the code. And at that time, council may direct staff to proceed with a new land use application to make any necessary changes to the shelter housing code. Staff's, so budget implications, there are none, and council alternatives. Staff's recommendation to city council is move to adopt general ordinance number 22-1388, which amends the three sections in Title 10 of the land use and development of, Title 10 land use and development of the DOWS municipal code, and the second option is to decline the adoption of general ordinance number 22-1388. That concludes my report. Do you have any questions of staff?
Any questions by the city council, and then I'll move, I'll move over to a public comment or public questions, and then back to the council for discussion. Any questions of the staff on this ordinance?
I do.
Counsel Runyon?
Just because I'm having a lot of trouble with the printing, trying to find all of the things we talked about. In the last meeting, one thing we did talk about that was important was that we would put a time of review if we make, if we adopt this change, and that is in there, correct?
So, so it's correct. So what staff has planned to do, I will put a tickler on my calendar and plan to bring it back to the council in the spring of 2023, so that we can actually review any type of applications that we've received, and if there's any issues or concerns, and then ask council if they would like us to proceed with making a modification to maybe changing it to a conditional use versus a permitted outright use.
Thank you, I apologize. I could not find the paper that had that particular slide on it that you started with, and now they're all out of order, but thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions of the staff by the city council? Okay, we'll move the public comment. I see Mr. LaPointe here. He was at our last meeting and had a comment. Mr. LaPointe? Please introduce yourself and give your address.
Good evening, Mayor Mays and council members. My name is Kenny LaPointe, and I am the executive director of Mid-Columbia Community Action Council. Our address is 312 East Fourth Street in the DOWS. Thanks for having me this evening, and I just want to thank you for your responsiveness to our concerns over the proposed land use ordinance update from the last council meeting. I also wanted to provide one additional update for you, and that is that our region was actually recently selected to participate in a, well, we're, we're being put into legislation to hopefully participate in a county and city coordinated homeless pilot project. We did submit a letter of interest on behalf of Wasco, Hood River, and Sherman Counties, as well as the City of the DOWS Unhoused Task Force and the City of Hood River Homeless Stakeholders Group. We are one of six communities in the state that were selected to be placed into legislation. It is currently legislative concept 218. That'll go before the legislature during the short session. If the, this legislation does pass, we will receive $1 million for coordination and administration of homeless services over the next two years. So that'll be a big big amount of funding to come into the region to continue to help us to run our programming. Unfortunately, it's not used, it cannot be used for capital, so it will not go into our navigation center project. But it will help us operate our navigation center. One of the things that we requested for in the legislation is the ability to use the funds for program implementation, so direct client services. It was not included in the original piece of legislation, but it was added per our request. You know, that, that resource is very important to the region. It'll be very important to the operation of the navigation center, and I look forward to coming back to you, hopefully in mid-February to provide you on an update on where we're at in the navigation center development process, because we are moving rather quickly, and there's been a lot of updates over the last probably month and a half. Happy to answer any questions, but thank you for your responsiveness to our comment last month.
Thank you, Kenny, and congratulations on, on getting yet more money for our community. So good work. Okay, any other public comment or public questions from the public? Okay, back to the city council. Any discussion on the proposed ordinance anymore?
Yeah.
Counsel Runyon?
Well, my other piece of paper here, and I just wanted to Counselor Long's suggestion at our last meeting, that the, the line that said bathing facilities requirement was removed for both established seasonal shelters, but we were gonna put in there be accessible, so it wasn't implied that there, those facilities are necessarily available on site, that they would be accessible. Is that correct, Counselor Long? I just want to make sure it's your that was put in there.
Okay, right. So it's okay that it's not in there, Rod, because the, the legislation at the state level requires it to be available, and so it, it's taken care of by the state, so we don't have to specify.
Okay, I just want to make sure that issue was, thank you.
Yeah.
I do read the minutes.
Yeah, it is great.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, looking for a motion on the, the ordinance amending the city's land use development code.
Mr. Mayor, I think if this has been posted and you want to adopt it by title only, you would say, does anyone want it read in full? And if not, the city clerk will read it by title, and then we could have a motion.
Okay, does any council would like to have the ordinance read in full?
No.
No.
Okay, if I saw any hint of that, I was gonna ask that you get muted, but it sounds like we have unanimous consensus to not read it. So does that suffice, Ms. Kruger?
Then the city clerk would read the title of the ordinance.
Okay, will the city, will the city clerk please read the title, please?
General Ordinance Number 22-1388, amending sections 10.2.030, 10.5.060.030, and 10.5.070.020 of the DOWS municipal code, Title 10 Land Use and Development.
Okay, Counsel Long?
Sure, I'd like to make the motion. I move to adopt general ordinance number 22-1388, amending sections 10.2.030, 10.5.060.030, and 10.5.070.020 of the DOWS municipal code, Title 10 Land Use and Development by title only.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Counsel Long and seconded by Counsel Randall to approve the ordinance amending the land use development and land use and development code. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
McGlaughlin, aye.
Runyon, aye. Richardson, aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Hurd.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have item 11C, a resolution approving a rate increase for the DOWS disposal service. Mr. Hunter? Or is it Ms. Kruger?
It is me.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Mays and members of council. We had this resolution on the council agenda last meeting, and you had requested we bring it back after providing it with some financial information, which was sent to you, I believe, on the 27th of December. That date could be wrong, because I had a couple of delays in getting it to you. Anyway, the resolution is to approve rate increase averaging 5.05%, resulting in increase in operational and disposal costs incurred by the DOWS disposal service effective January 1, 2020. For those of you who check your email regularly, you will have seen email I sent out this morning regarding trying, trying to get some kind of number for you for profit margins for this type of business. Waste management is a publicly traded business, and so it publishes its financials quarterly and annually. And looking at 2021's financials, it looks like their profit margin, gross profit margin, it was about 38.5%, so that's not gonna include taxes, fees, fines, anything. So that's not going to include taxes, fees, fines, anything extraneous like that, that they're going to have to pay out of that profit. Uh, I also reached out to local community or cities in the Dow or in Oregon to see if they had some sort of profit information they could share with us. And I heard from two, Beaverton and Hillsborough. Beaverton has it in their code that their disposal service providers they have for uh, are allowed a net profit of not to exceed nine percent. And Hillsborough has similar language for their providers and it's a not to exceed eight percent. And those are both net numbers. So after all their taxes and everything else has been paid. And staff reports, uh, staff's recommendation on this didn't change from last time because I felt that was more of a political decision than anything else. So I'll leave that discussion to you all.
Any questions for Mister Hunter? Or any discussion? Councillor Long.
So that information, um, Mister Hunter is actually very helpful because the numbers that you sent out in December were not for twenty twenty-one, but they were for the twenty twenty year. And that year their, um, gross revenue was seventeen percent. And so that's quite a bit higher than the other cities reported. And, um, yeah, I'll, I'll leave it there. I have some other things I could say if people have comments, but.
Okay, any other comments or questions of the staff? Okay, looking for a motion. Councillor Long.
I'll move to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash zero zero two, approving a rate increase averaging approximately three percent, resulting from increased operational and disposal fee costs incurred by the Dallas Disposal Service effective January first, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Is that percentage, uh, correct? I heard, I heard three percent.
That is the percent that I am proposing, yes.
I understand, okay. I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution approving a rate increase of three percent as opposed to five point zero five percent. Is there any more discussion?
Uh, I'll make some comments, Mister Mayor, since I proposed the change. So I just wanted to point out that based on the numbers that were given to council and that are confidential, based on the gross revenue from twenty twenty, which I accidentally forgot that I needed to increase it by three percent because we gave them a rate increase for twenty twenty-one, but using the old numbers without the rate increase, um, a three percent, uh, increase would be over a hundred thousand dollars in, um, income to waste management. Um, if we gave them the five point zero five percent, that would be over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars increase um, just in one year. And I, I just wanted to bring that to people's attention.
Okay, I think, um, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask for any comments from anybody in the audience. Anybody would like to speak to this issue before it's voted on? Mister Nichols. You're muted. Oh, yeah, wait for, um, the city clerk to unmute you.
Mister Mayor, are we in the middle of a vote?
No. Oh, yes, we are.
We are. We can't, we can't go back. Point of order.
You can't, uh, take discussion during, uh, no, Mister Care's, he has had, okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting, uh, McLaughlin and Runyon in opposed to the motion and I'm getting Long, Randall and Richardson, is that correct? Voting for it? Is that right?
Yes, for me.
Yes. Motion passes, motion passes three to two. Anybody in the audience like to comment at this point? Mister Nichols, did you still want to say anything?
Yes, I did, sir. Uh, Roger Nichols, sixteen seventeen, Oregon Street. And in the forty-six years I've lived here, I've never had two garbage pickups in a row missed. It's been eighteen days since mine was picked up, which means that half the month of December, we didn't get service. So I'm hoping that we only get half the month's bill. And I just want to make that clear. I understand the weather's been ugly. We live right below the hospital. The streets were cleared. We shoveled a path to our garbage. It didn't get picked up. So that's my thought.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Item eleven B. Resolution directing the city attorney to issue subpoenas for the production of records. Mister Kara.
Thank you very much, Mayor Mays, honorable members of council. Um, a few months ago in November, I brought to you a proposed ordinance which you adopted, codified as chapter five point zero one to our code. That, uh, ordinance of general applicability provides the city with an invaluable tool, namely to compel the production of records that we otherwise don't have the access to. Um, and so when I brought it to you in November, I, um, sort of explained certain aspects of our code, give the city certain powers, but nowhere in our code before five oh, uh, five point zero one, did we have the ability and the authority to compel the production of certain records. And so, uh, under the authority granted by that statute, which is now in our code, I wanted to bring this proposed resolution to you to talk about chapters eight point zero two and eight point zero four of our code, which deal with similar issues, um, generally governing the ideas around, uh, short-term rentals throughout the city. So chapter eight point zero two deals with, uh, short-term rental licensing, which is a, a critical, a critical aspect of this entire, um, regime really, uh, where the city has applications and application process where someone who wants to list their property for, uh, short-term rentals needs to, uh, provide that application uh, to our community development department for the review to ensure it meets certain formalities that are articulated elsewhere in the code. Violations of chapter eight point zero two, uh, result in punitive penalties. It's two hundred and fifty dollars per day per violation. But nowhere in chapter eight point zero two does it allow the city to compel the production of records necessary to determine whether a violation of that chapter has occurred. In the same vein, chapter eight point zero four, uh, which follows in the code sequentially, but on purpose, right? Uh, here deals with transient room taxes. The relationship between a short-term rental and transient room taxes is that short-term rentals pay transient room taxes. Um, and this was this also does not, does not provide an avenue through which the city can compel the production of records necessary to determine whether or not somebody has paid an accurate amount of taxes. Um, and so taxes are self-reported and, uh, just like, you know, nearly all other taxes, um, are susceptible to an audit. And so in some cases, when the, specifically when the finance department and the finance director have information that would suggest that an info, a return that someone submits to the city to pay their taxes is, um, deficient in some way, uh, there is an authority in chapter eight point zero four for the finance director to make what's known as a deficiency determination, which basically says, show me your books and let's see if, uh, what you're reporting is consistent with what your books represent. Any operator who fails to furnish these types of records to the city, um, it, well, willfully is, is guilty of a misdemeanor, um, in our municipal court. Um, however, just like in chapter eight point zero two, there is no way to compel the production of those records. Our code merely makes reference to it. And so prior to the enactment of that general ordinance in November, the city didn't have a way to harness that ability to check these records. Um, and so as I explained it back in November, it seems here we're in a position where we can implement this code to authorize designees of, of either the city manager or the city attorney to, um, issue a subpoena for the production of certain records and has a whole, uh, legal process to assure that or to assure and ensure, um, that all legal protections are being followed. Uh, and so this resolution is, well, about three and a half months in the making. Uh, we had to enact chapter five point zero one first, um, in order to bring this first type of resolution, which I'm asking tonight, uh, for your consideration to authorize me to issue a subpoena to Airbnb, for their production of records connected with Mister Stephen Day. And so, uh, Mister Stephen Day appears to own or control a number of entities operating throughout the city. And the city through, uh, the planning department, the finance department and me have, uh, attempted to contact it and have made some contacts with Mister Day connected with his properties. And, and Mister Day has provided some records suggesting that he's at least fundamentally aware of, uh, chapter eight point zero two and eight point zero four. However, uh, upon reviewing those records with staff, it appears, uh, the records are incomplete and they're definitely inconsistent with the city's understanding of his businesses here in the city limits. Um, it's, it's also my understanding that he is not a city resident. Uh, he resides primarily in Portland, um, but does own a significant number of real properties throughout the city. And so, um, this is not an unusual request. I know it's, it's, it's my first time bringing something like this to the council, but, um, regionally, uh, and throughout the state and the nation, uh, these types of requests are, are often made for, in front of administrative and legislative bodies like the city council, to, to auth, to, to authorize the attorney to issue a subpoena that can accompany a request, uh, which I plan on working on as soon as and if the council decides to authorize this resolution with our police chief Tom Worthy, who's still on the call. Um, and Tom and I have been working, um, at, very briefly, trying to understand the process through which the city can request financial records from, uh, hosting platforms like Airbnb. And so this happens so regularly that Airbnb in fact implemented a law enforcement portal on their website where we registered as the City of the Dallas Police Department. And, and it's, it's, it appears to be a very straightforward process so long as our, our request for certain records, uh, is accompanied by a subpoena. And so, uh, I'm here tonight to ask you for a subpoena. And so I'm, I'm happy to entertain any questions, um, or any specifics that you think I may have glossed over. At your convenience. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Mister Kara?
None.
I have one, um. Mister Day, has he been told that the records, had the records he submitted are incomplete?
Uh, my last contact was through his property manager where I asked for the records that were not provided and I, I never did receive a response.
So he didn't even call you back?
It was an email. We were having an email correspondence. Didn't receive a response.
And how long ago was that? About, you don't have to look up the exact date. I mean.
Okay, I have it right here. And, um, that was on November twenty-second.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mister Mayor.
I'll second it. Sorry. Sorry. I'm, I'm ready for the meeting to be done.
I'll make this quick. I move to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash double O three, a resolution directing the city attorney to issue subpoenas for the production of records relating to Stephen Day and ensuring compliance with an enforcement of the Dallas Municipal Code Chapters eight point O two and eight point O four.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by councillor Richardson and seconded by councillor Long to approve the resolution for the issuance of subpoenas. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
McLaughlin, aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mister Kara. I trust you, you'll continue to keep the council informed on this particular issue.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
May I ask a question, Mister Mayor?
Sure.
Mister Kara, is there a, is there typical that these always come to a city council? Or is this something that can be of a more routine nature by council putting it in place to where city administration can go forward with subpoenas and that sort of thing?
Though, that, that, that's an excellent question, councillor Runyon. Um, I drafted, uh, chapter five point zero one, as it's now known, with the understanding that the council would, would be the authority that is vested with, um, granting subpoenas, known as legislative subpoenas. And so as the legislative body of the city and the governing body of the city, it must come from the city council. However, um, I thought about it and I, I didn't know what to do. So, um, as far as whether to bring this as an action item or to, to bring it on, on a consent agenda. Um, and I figured for my first one, I'd like to have a discussion with you all to see about whether this is something, you know, that, that can be transferred to the consent agenda. They're fairly routine. Um, and so if you like, going forward and the council so wishes, I, I'm more than happy to ask the city clerk to put these types of requests on the consent agenda. So at least the council's keeping, uh, apprised of the situation and can read the staff report about it, but maybe doesn't need to get into discussions about it. And at any, at any point, um, any councillor can pull something from the consent agenda and make it an action item. And so, um, can I also request your informal consensus? A- after councillor Runyon's question, uh, going forward, would it be, uh, all right if I, if we, the city put these on our consent agenda for your consideration?
I'd like to just throw something out there that if somebody is, uh, not paying their transient rental tax.
Now, I don't want to change it just carte blanche, but I would like to see a recommendation in writing of why and why not. If that was a better way to go or not, as far as, uh, the council's time and so forth.
No problem. I'll, I'll absolutely, uh, get that in time for our next meeting. Thank you.
I just, I wanted to finish my thought that if somebody's not paying their transient rental tax and we've got dozens and dozens of people that are paying theirs and somebody isn't, I'm not so sure that, uh, that shouldn't be made a pub, more of a public issue. But I'll leave that up to the rest of you. That's just a thought from me.
Flog them, yes.
I think that's a little extreme, but.
Oh, okay. All right.
I would just like the council to think about that.
I, I'm in favor of the mayor's comments and I, I agree. McLaughlin.
All right, we'll wait to hear back from you, Jonathan, on that, on that issue.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Um. Did we vote on this?
Nah. Oh, yeah. Still pending.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye. Aye.
McLaughlin.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on with Mister Kara yet again. A motion authorizing the city attorney to execute the necessary settlement documents related to the national opioid, opioid litigations. Mister Kara.
Thank you very much, Mister Mayor and members of council. I'm bringing this to you tonight, uh, with a slight sense of relative urgency, in the sense that certain documents must be signed, if they're going to be signed at all, uh, by January twenty-sixth, which is in about sixteen days. Um, and it appears that the city is one of three, uh, political subdivisions of the state of Oregon that have not, um, signed on to these yet and we are one of the last three. And so I wanted to just sort of preface what I was about to say with that. And so, uh, generally there have been, uh, some longstanding multi-jurisdictional litigation surrounding uh, both the manufacturing and distribution of synthetic opioids, uh, which have contributed to what has been, uh, known as the national opioid, um, epidemic. And that, all of this, those cases have been brought by, um, governments against both manufacturers and distributors of, of certain opiate, uh, drugs. And so, um, the three largest pharmaceutical distributors of, of synthetic opioids are McKesson, Cardinal Health and AmerisourceBergen. And the largest manufacturer, uh, is known as Chanson Pharmaceuticals with its parent company being, um, Johnson and Johnson. And so, uh, these settlements, um, in, in these litigations have been reached by, um, a number of different states and, uh, counties and cities, um, all, all outside of Oregon and throughout the rest of the nation. This city, like most cities, This city, like most cities and counties, decided and elected to be a non-participating or a non-litigating party, although we are participants. And that's sort of what tonight's authorization is all about. And so you can think of non-litigating parties as spectators with a vested interest and will sign on to whatever the outcome is without actively engaging in the, the litigation itself. So not, not bringing any arguments or attorneys or expenses to the table and with very little risk. And so by and large, the significant majority, you know, at least over ninety percent of all cities and counties that are involved here are non-litigating parties, including the city. And so settlements appear to have been reached. Some of the terms that are floating around now that are binding are the distributors of the synthetic opioids will pay a maximum of twenty-one billion over eighteen years. And Johnson &amp; Johnson will pay a maximum of five billion over no more than nine years. And of that, twenty-six billion, twenty-two point eight billion dollars in settlement proceeds would be payable to states and cities and counties. And so I attached in my staff report is exhibit A or attachment A, the Oregon, the list of Oregon municipalities participating in this settlement, whether directly or indirectly, and their respective projected allocations of the settlement monies. You may notice a very long decimal of a percentage. But when you multiply that by the settlement amount, which is about three hundred and twenty-nine million minus some government lawyer fees, it appears that the city is poised to receive slightly over three hundred thousand dollars in this settlement. And the city did not spend hardly any money, no money at all really, in this settlement to date. And so importantly, and one of the reasons why I mentioned that the city is one of three entities in the state of Oregon that hasn't signed on, is that part of these settlements criteria is that a certain critical mass of all cities and counties buy into it. And so, and these are cities and counties with populations greater than ten thousand, which includes the city of the Dallas. And so if those, you know, even one city doesn't buy into this settlement agreement, the amount given to all cities goes down. And so it's, it's a consideration that I, I offer for your consideration tonight. And so the authorization that I'm requesting is authorizing me to sign both the settlement participation form, which gets us access to these funds, but also releases the three largest distributors in Johnson &amp; Johnson from claims on this matter again. It's sort of a, the city says, okay, we'll take your money and we promise not to sue you. That's the idea on, on these issues. That's the first authorization. The second is signing on to the state of Oregon subdivision agreements, which, which is kind of like the CSF funds that Matthew was talking about earlier, where there's going to be an allocation. And so the allocation is listed in exhibit A. And that would be in agreement with the state of Oregon. We have, if, if, if so authorized and the settlement does go through, which again depends not only on what happens here tonight, but what happens generally with other, other cities and counties throughout the state. But it, if it does go through, it appears that we have about five years to encumber or spend those funds. And the list of acceptable uses of those monies, I also attach and include in your staff report for your consideration tonight, is attached as attachment B. And, and, you know, we can expect those funds to be entering the city as early as April, if the settlement goes through. And so on January twenty-sixth or by January twenty-sixth, if the city is interested in accepting these monies, we would have to sign these documents. And the, it appears that the final date for the parties to decide whether they're going to go forward with the settlement or walk away entirely and try again later is February first. And so, you know, in the next two or three weeks, we should have a very good idea of whether this settlement will go through and whether the city will get that three hundred thousand, which is earmarked again to fight the epidemic known, known as the opioid epidemic. And so I'm, I'm very happy to entertain any questions here from anybody.
So minor clarification, Jonathan. Exhibit B is labeled as exhibit E. That should be D. Is that correct? The remediation uses?
So that, yeah, I labeled it as an attachment D, but you're right. It's called exhibit E because it's exhibit E to one of the documents I'm requesting your authorization to sign.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Kara?
No.
Jonathan, are we giving up or risking anything by signing on to this? Except the right to sue these pharmaceutical companies separately?
Other than that very express right that you just saw articulately described, Council Richardson, it does not appear that the city is missing out on anything here. And in fact, there appears to be a tremendous desire from the Lee of Oregon Cities and the Association of Oregon Counties that all cities and counties with populations greater than ten thousand sign it. It becomes highly recommended and, and, and yes, that's about it.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have one other one. If the city was to receive, say, three hundred thousand dollars minus attorney's fees, whatever, is there anything that would preclude the city from, and you have a list here of all, all the uses that can be used for, which is somewhat constrained? I mean, we can't go out and pave a road with it or anything as well. So is there anything that would keep us from giving that money to a nonprofit, say, that deals with this? This kind of issue more, is there anything that would prevent us from doing that?
That's an excellent question. Sure, sure. No, that's an excellent question, Mr. Mayor. And in fact, not only is there nothing preventing that, it's encouraged. The city may form agreements or, or, or even ventures, which is an even interest, more interesting concept in a lot of ways than an agreement where we're, we're a true partnership. But we can also do agreements with federal, state, local, tribal, nonprofit or private sector entities as the city sees fit to spend these, to spend these monies. And I, I just wanted to clarify as well that the three hundred and three thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars, that, that's, that's the amount. There is no subtraction for attorney's fees. The attorney's fees are deducted from the three hundred and twenty-nine million. And yeah, and they're not coming to the city. So that's going to be spent on the litigating parties. It's my understanding at least that the litigating parties, you know, it was quite expensive to bring all this to the table. And so their attorneys are going to be getting a cut. And the city is a non-litigating party, doesn't have any attorney's fees, so to say.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Just to point out that it also could go to law enforcement and a program that fits the need and MPs and a lot of things. But we can make those decisions once we have the check in our hands. I'd make the motion to go ahead if you're ready.
Go ahead, Mr. Council Runyon.
I'd like to move to authorize the city attorney to execute and submit all necessary settlement documents connected with the national opioid litigation as substantively described.
Is there a second?
Yes, McLaughlin will second this.
It's been moved by Council Runyon and seconded by Council McLaughlin to proceed. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Does I.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Kara. And finally, item twelve A. The discussion, this is a discussion item regarding the disposition of real property, namely the State Office Building on Union, seven hundred block of Union Street. Mr. Kara?
Thank you very much, honorable mayor and members of council, yet again, for, I hope, the last time tonight. I bring for your consideration a discussion item connected with seven hundred Union Street here in the Dallas, informally known as the State Office Building. And so my staff report sort of goes over some of the details that I will hope to discuss with you tonight. And, and my objective here is not to walk away with any action item. We're not going to be selling a piece of property here tonight in, in any case, but simply a, an informal consensus of the council as to whether the city would like to proceed with the public hearing in a future meeting potentially in February on hearing whether the city should deem this parcel surplus and what the minimum acceptable terms of, of that process might look like. And so you may also notice I attached, as one of the attachments to this staff report, the commercial property appraisal, which included a combined valuation of two parcels of land, which comprised the property in the amount of four point eight million dollars. And so I wanted to give you guys some additional context as to why we're bringing this for your consideration and what this could mean for the city. And so generally, the building on the seven hundred Union Street, that address comprises two parcels. Parcel A is a parking lot that serves. Parcel B, which has the building on it. In total, it, it seems that it's about two point six or, I'm sorry, two point two five acres, according to GIS. And the parcels are cumulatively zoned CBC District Two, Central Business Commercial. And the building is owned by the city, as are both parcels, in fee, and was built in nineteen seventy-seven. Contains about twenty-three thousand square feet in gross and about a little bit less than that, twenty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight in rentable area. It is currently one hundred percent occupied by the state of Oregon, namely the DHS and OED for the Employment Department. And so the entity that I've been negotiating with for the renewal of these leases, which have expired but have been extended through July thirty-first of this year, is the Department of Administrative Services, which handles all lease negotiations for the state as well as property acquisitions and, you know, the administrative aspect of the state. And as far as I can tell, the city entered into these leases, the most recent iteration of these leases in two thousand nine. And DHS occupies about seventy-five percent of the building and OED, the remaining twenty-five percent or thereabouts. And both of them expired in, well, about a year ago, January thirty-first. And as I mentioned just a minute ago, I think the city's extended them through July thirty-first under these terms, which we've extended several times since. And the reason I wanted to bring this to you for discussion is because a couple of different reasons. It's multifaceted. The first is the city is generally not in the landlord business. And cities that are tend to have commercial real estate departments that manage these sorts of activities. This city does not have that kind of department and really only has, well, other than the Veterans, the, the Veterans Building, which we leased to Wasco County, this appears to be our only other income generating lease. And so that, that's sort of one reason why the city might want to consider selling the building. The other is, is that under the terms of the existing leases, the, the state pays thirty-four thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars a month to the city. But that's contingent upon, it's a low rent. And, and the city also has, under the terms of those leases, the ability to get reimbursements for our capital improvements. Now, again, as I mentioned earlier, those leases, the earliest iteration of which I could find is around two thousand nine. I got confirmation from DAS that the state is no longer interested in renewing those types of leases where the state will reimburse the city for its capital improvements. And so the state is entering into new leases with, with new landlords or the same landlords under materially different terms. Now, they're willing to, to pay a higher price to offset that in a monthly rent. But given the volatility associated with the cities, or not, not the city of the Dallas necessarily, but all cities and all, all landlords making capital improvements, the state has found it difficult to work that and factor that into their budget, which is on a biennial cycle. And so this is all information I received from DAS. And so with those two concepts in mind, I asked DAS many months ago if they were interested, if the state was interested in purchasing this building from the city, just informally. And at first, they, they confirmed that they are interested, but they've since backed out. And they backed out due to nothing to do with the building or with the city of the Dallas. They just had a change in their financial situation, completely independent of this situation. But all that happened after the city retained a commercial property appraisal. And so once I got the results of the commercial property appraisal and I, I saw the valuation of the combined parcels at four point eight million, I thought I might want to bring it to the council for its opinion on whether they'd like to proceed, maybe next month, at the latest or earliest, to, with a public hearing to consider whether it is necessary or convenient to the city to dispose of this parcel. Any disposal would be consistent with the surplus property disposal procedures that I attached as resolution sixteen zero two eight here to the staff report. And so before I go any further, if there is any further to go, I just wanted to see if I had any questions or if I could explain anything to anybody so far.
Any questions for Mr. Kara? Councilman McLaughlin?
If the state rejected purchase, then who would purchase the building?
So news, news of the city's potential interest in disposing the building has traveled quite far. I'm aware of at least four distinct private entities that are aware of this building's potential consideration for disposal. We've all expressed a strong interest in purchasing it. Specifically, those, those, at least two of those entities have demonstrated to me at least that they are committed to retaining the state here as a tenant, as a long-term tenant, so long as the state desires to. Looking at the numbers in the commercial property appraisal, it appears that those leases were about, were factored into the valuation. And so by all accounts, the state has, appears to be a great tenant. They pay on time every time. What more could you ask for as a landlord? I get it. And so, so do, so do all these other private entities that are interested in purchasing this building. And so there, there appears to be, I, I'm not going to say significant interest, right? It's quite expensive, but there appears to be a serious interest from a small handful of private entities that are interested in developing and retaining and holding real property. One of them happens to be here tonight. His name is Justin Braswell with Rubicon Investments in Portland. He's been on the call since the very beginning. There he is waving. Rubicon is a real estate holding company and they own, well, the regional office for DHS. And they have many leases with the state throughout the state of Oregon. And so as, as one example of a potential purchaser of a building like this, it would be companies like Rubicon Investments, more, more likely than not.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Council Runyon?
Not that I'm, at this point, interested in selling this property for reasons I stated the last time we talked about this, that it's a center of our community. And if the city of the Dallas needed a new place to go for a city hall, what, what better place than, than right there? And we can't replicate that piece of property. But in reading your documents and whatnot, one of the things you talked about, if that was a road that the council chose to go down and sell, was that it seemed like you could put a restriction on there where a new owner could only rent to certain entities? If I was somebody buying a piece of property, that would be the turnoff right there to have rules on after I buy it, what I can do with it? I mean, so I don't understand how you could have that kind of restriction. Maybe you could explain that?
Absolutely. That's a, that's an excellent point, Council Runyon. What we're talking about in that sense is the idea of encumbering title to part, to property, which is how home, homeownership associations stay in business. And restrictive covenants are a, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Restrictive covenants are a type of real property legal concept that is, is very old and very robust. And the case law on it is, well, very broad and authorizes people who own or entities who own or owners, it authorizes owners of real property to add a restriction to the deed if they own that deed in something known as fee, fee simple, which the city does, which basically says we are going to bind a condition on the title to this property through the life of this property. Now, anytime any owner binds or encumbers title, of course, it affects the bottom line value of what that deed is worth. A deed without any encumbrances is known as a fee simple deed, is what we have now as the city for more, more or less, which has the highest value. Now, anytime you want to add a restriction, which the city can do, as all owners can do, so long as those restrictions are authorized by law and non-discriminatory, that will have an impact on the price ultimately of what someone is willing to pay for it generally. In this case, however, um it seems that part of the value of this specific uh deed, if we were to sell it, uh comes from the fact that the state is a tenant and is willing to pay. And so just because it doesn't make a lot of sense for the city, who's not in the landlord business, to continue on. Um, if that is the case, it certainly does make a lot of sense and financial sense to uh those that are in the industry. And and look at an evaluation like this as a significantly, you know, positive uh return on investment depending on entirely what the city decides to sell it for. Um, and so uh restrictions on real property and titles to real property are are very common. Um, and it it keeps companies like Wasco Title and Ameri Title in business in order to dig up all those old deeds. Um, and to ensure that there are no restrictions on them that might make title non marketable. In this case, we have very marketable title and the imposition of a restriction on this deed does not appear to make it unmarketable in any sense. In fact, uh a deed restriction here that says the owner must continue to lease to the state so long as the state continues to lease from them. Uh, it appears that might not impact the value at all if, but if it does, it might impact it uh going up, not going down. Does that sort of answer your question, Councilor Runyon?
Yeah, my other comment, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Is that uh with regard to communities that have uh land departments to handle their particular buildings and buy and sell and all that. Um, it's been pointed out in these documents that uh there really haven't been any problems with the state as our renter and that they are very quick and pay on time and it's a lot of income. And the building is in very good shape. It looks like another thirty years, according to the uh appraisal documents. I mean, I don't think we need a real estate department at this point for one building because of who is renting that building uh that it's not unless somebody, some department head can tell me different. It sounds like we've not really had any huge problems or any that we couldn't handle with our immediate staff. And I it seems to me we have an attorney who's very skilled at real estate to understanding of memos and codicils and all of that. So I'm real happy with our situation. And again, I think that's a piece of property that if it came down to it, I I I think that's as much as we all love historic buildings in recent meetings. Um, it, well, it's nice to have an ace in the hole if city hall had to go another direction or be modernized. And modernization probably could only occur by moving to a building that's just a tad newer than the one we occupy at this point. Just my thoughts.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, one quick question. What is the monthly income of that building each month?
Eight thousand.
What was it?
It's thirty four eighteen fifteen, right?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So uh the total rent coming into the cities uh from the state, both D H S and O E D, the total rent uh is thirty four thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty six cents per month, which is four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars per year.
Here.
Rent. All right, um, however, what the city receives as rent is not necessarily what that building is making the city. Right? The city has expenses connected with owning that building, um which I was, you know, not getting into the nitty gritty of the finances here in this discussion. That's something that I would typically reserve for the public hearing if the council decides to move on. Um, where there would be an opportunity for the public to comment, um testify uh in in support or opposition to the idea. Um, but very informally, I can share with you here at this meeting, uh the finance director and I had a meeting on on this specific issue a few months back. Um, and I seem to recall um with a, you know, hypothetical situation where the city decides to list this building for like five million dollars. Um, it 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 appears that it would take about fifteen or twenty years under the current lease at least, or even under leases that are paying more per rent per month. It'll take about fifteen to twenty years for the city to see that five million dollars in cash. Um, sort of give you a very rough idea of the of the types of uh liabilities associated with this asset. Um, and so, yes, you're right, it is fixed and stable income, and I'm quite capable of negotiating a lease renewal here. But um it would be under different terms. And then new leases wouldn't have any capital uh capital improvement reimbursements. Um, and so those are expenses that are going to be coming out of the city's pocket. And the higher rent is supposed to be offsetting that. And and I can also share with you in my negotiations with the state that the higher rent that they're offering um is not sufficient for for for, at least for the city at least, who only has this one building to depend on to justify its expending capital improvements on. Um, but those numbers would be worked out more specifically and with greater detail by the finance director and I in the event the council's interested in proceeding here with a public hearing to consider this. Um, and if not, I'm happy to report back um and and work with the finance director uh going forward at continuing to renew these leases with the state. And so um I just wanted to clarify.
I had two questions and uh they're both following follow ups to this uh Councilor McLaughlin's and what you just said, Mr. Kara. One is um and maybe I missed it in the staff report, where does that thirty four thousand dollars go? Is that going to the general fund?
It's an excellent question for our finance director if she wouldn't mind.
Um, they we have two um funds of the money is split out that goes into one is goes into um the city hall fund and then part of the money goes into the capital project fund.
Okay, thank you. And in following up what you just said, Jonathan, um, you were saying that the state had off didn't offer enough to compensate for the fact we're not being reimbursed for capital expenses?
I said that it uh of a very generalized hypothetical situation where I'm currently negotiating with the state. Um, it doesn't appear that it would be sufficient to to cover. I mean, the ideas here are uh hypothetical because currently the building is in good shape. But, you know, soon enough, this the building might need a new elevator shaft or a new heating duct or something, you know, an unknown expense of significant value. And so um getting to a um a workable understanding of money in versus potential money out is is difficult. Um, but the finance director and I are can work on it and we can continue to work on it going forward. Um, but ye- yes, generally, it does not appear that it's going to be sufficient to cover those expenses for 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 an outfit like the city, which only has one real commercial property. Um, now, to an entity who has several or several hundred or several dozen, um those types of expenses may not mean so much.
Well, as as much as I would like to keep the state as a tenant, I really would. I mean, they're reliable and we've been talking about that all during the course of this discussion. I do think that we should be adequately compensated. And I'm sure that you and Angie will be negotiating with that in mind, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And I I would like to say as well that um that at least DAS is fully aware that the city council is hearing this matter tonight. Um, and in any case, has has encouraged me to inform you all that um they have no plans on leaving. At, you know, uh they're happy that they're here. They serve a uh fundamentally important public purpose for this uh city and for this region generally. Um, and that no matter the outcome, they're very happy here. And uh and so they said effectively to me, uh sell it or don't sell it, just don't kick us out. They're right, and they're fine either way.
Okay, and my last my last issue is um if we were to receive, say, four point eight million dollars for the building, does the staff have a recommendation as to what we would do with four point eight million dollars? Would we just dump it in those other two funds or do you have a plan?
Or that is, uh, if you're asking me, Mr. Mayor, that is something I have no idea about. Uh, I would defer to the finance director and the city manager.
Um, I, at this point of time, I don't know of any upcoming projects that we could use those funds on. It would have to go into a co- capital project fund that would be dedicated for future use. And so the money would be transferred over to the L G I P account and accruing. I mean, you know, the the monthly interest rate on it, which is not that much right now. Um, so the um increase in, you know, the property and stuff is probably much higher than what we're getting on an interest rate for the L G I P at this point.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Our Council Runyon has sort of given us his uh opinion about what we should do. Uh, any other counselors wish to weigh in?
I think I agree with Council Runyon. I think um it is a good piece to be hold on to. We have a pretty mutual beneficial mutually beneficial situation. Um, I think we should go ahead and uh and hold on to it for now.
Anybody else?
I think we should hold on to it.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm keeping an open mind. I want to have more information.
Yeah. What more information would you like to have, Counselor?
Um, the pros and cons, and it doesn't appear to have risk uh with the state moving out of the building. However, um I I just feel that uh any hmm, how would I say this? On the state's part, if they're worried about the city and and losing the the ownership of that building, do we have any direction on the use of that building by keeping it under our authority? Or if we sell it to a private entity? Um, I know you said that we can put restrictions on it, but that still gives me hesitation to consider. I, it just seems like I'm impartial to per, of course, keeping it, maintaining it as we have it. But I also want to look at what are the potential that amount of money could make a huge impact on our community? Can we take that money and build a new city hall? Can we take that money and invest it back into our community? That would be my question. Does that, does that make sense? So I'm still, I I'm leaning towards maintaining it, but I also want to look at any other options that may come up as well. Uh, that's my take.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Counselor McLaughlin. Um, one aspect that I haven't discussed with you, but I did include in my staff report was the potential of dividing those two parcels into two separate parcels um and and perhaps exploring the option of selling the parcel with the building on it and retaining a separate parcel for the city's future development. Um, which is an option. Um, but with respect to those restrictive covenants, um very commonly what happens when a new purchaser would take over a piece of real property from an owner uh with a restricted covenant that says you must do X Y Z or uh or else that or else is uh the parcel comes back to the owner. And so those are commonly known as reverters. And um it would be uh trivial for me to draft into a deed encumbering its title to say that so long as the state is willing and indicates to the city that it is willing to continue being here uh at that building. Um, I agree as the new owner to always lease to the state uh under penalty of if I don't, I have to give the entire place and deed back to the city of the Dallas. Um, if that makes any difference in your considerations here tonight, I wanted to make sure I expressly mention that. Um, and so uh otherwise, the state doesn't have any uh reservations and they're happy to continue leasing with us. Um, and that's easy enough too. And that that's exactly the point of this discussion item is just to get your ideas. Um, and so and I'm happy to bring it back or I'm happy to negotiate with the state, no problem.
And if we did have a public hearing, that would not necessarily obligate us to proceed with the sale of the building, would it? We could have a hearing and decide to keep the building.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Council Richardson, do you have any thoughts on the matter?
I don't, uh, except for I guess I don't see any real impetus to sell. Um, and without that, it seems like uh the kind of irreplaceable asset that would be um something me we'd really want to think twice about before letting go.
I think the change has been that the capital reimbursement is changed with the state, which main means that if everything were to remain the same, yes, I would be in agreement that we move on. But, you know, we have some major uh expenditures coming up on that building with the heat source with H H vac system. And uh I don't know, that's one of the things that I would take into consideration, that the changes of the state now they're willing to increase the monthly rent to compensate. So we place those funds into a capital, which we're doing currently, correct? Yes.
Yes.
But we're just not, we're not placing enough because you're telling us that it has a low rent comparative to other buildings within the system.
Well, uh, it's probably the highest rent anybody's paying in the city of the Dallas.
Oh, yeah, I'm certain of that.
Yeah, but uh relative to, you know, um
Other cities.
Yeah, it's 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 very, it's very small. But currently, the current leases, you you hit the nail on the head, Counselor McLaughlin. Um, I wouldn't be bringing this to you all for your input and discussion if the current leases were going to be continuing onwards. I wouldn't have even thought of, hey, why don't we, why don't I see if the city is interested in selling this? But specifically because the state will no longer be reimbursing for capital improvements. Um, it seems, it seemed prudent for me to at least explore this option with you all. Uh, I am not committed one way or the other. I just wanted to get some consensus because that 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 appears necessary for the next step. But if there is no consensus, that's consensus enough for me to continue negotiating leases with the state with the understanding that any future leases will likely be more than thirty four thousand dollars per month. But the city's on its own when it comes to capital improvements for the building. And so capital improvements generally are those improvements that are significantly expensive but improve the useful life of the building. The city invested significant amounts of money into this building already. We just uh bought a generator for it last year for about a hundred forty thousand dollars. I mean, these expenses are not um, you know, a coat of paint on the walls. I mean, they are the walls, right? That's what it costs. And so um with all that in mind, I'm happy with just an informal consensus here tonight.
Well, it seems that we do have a consensus that we want to keep the building, but we also have a concern. And I I I join Council McLaughlin in that concern about making sure that the rent that's negotiated will adequately compensate us for ca- any capital expenses that we incur in the future. Um, so that's that's what I'm kind of gathering here. Council Runyon?
Yeah, and I I just wanted to to speak to Council McLaughlin as well because even though my initial thing is I want to keep this because I think it's a gem where it is and it could be possible use down the road. I still, if something huge comes forward, I'm willing to consider that information. As far as you're still in negotiations regarding the lease and so forth, uh, it may be that you might consider uh some sort of stair step where we come in higher for a couple of years and maybe it ratchets down, that kind of thing, in order to make the loss of the capital improvement to refunding uh a less bitter pill to take. So I think there's different types of negotiation that could be put together for the new lease arrangement.
Mr. Runyon, um, can I, I'm sorry, can I just mention one thing? Um, on on the um city hall um fund right now, there's currently, when we start our beginning fund balance, we really only start with eighty thousand dollars. So we really don't have a lot of money that is actually as our beginning fund balance is going to help us with those pro- capital projects in that fund. So the money, the there's some money that's been transferred over to the capital project fund. That capital project fund funds capital projects within the city hall. So, um, if we were to um renew the leases and say that we're going to do um all the 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 new stuff that they would like us to um do, we would have to be able to put some money into the city hall fund to do some of those projects. So I did just want to let you guys be aware of that that fund is um, we get our revenue and we get our revenue for our expenses. And if the expenses, let's say we get our revenue for our expenses at um fifty thousand dollars and our expenses are forty eight thousand, we actually in our leases that are current right now, we have, we give them two thousand dollars back. If our expenses go, you know, over three thousand over, then we send them a bill for the three thousand dollars. So it it's kind of a different lease. So I just wanted you guys to be aware that um if we move forward, we will have to put some money at the into the beginning fund balance from capital projects or somewhere to actually do some of those increases that they're at least hold improvements that they're asking for.
Yeah, and we'll work that out with the C I P. And if the, you know, the direction is to go ahead and continue negotiating, it may be a that we just have a lean year the first year so we can collect an appropriate amount of rent to offset for the following year for capital improvement projects. It's going to be a little tricky, but we can figure that out. Maybe Angie can even look into whether or not we can create a reserve for capital in that state office building fund so that part of that rent money goes into capital for the next year or something like that. So it sounds like we have a little bit of work to do, but we can figure that out.
So my my other thought was that uh in terms of, you know, getting a new big bucket of money, we're on the cusp of a lot of money coming into uh the city. we're on the cusp of a lot of money coming into the city treasury through the agreements we were discussing earlier tonight. So I I'm just not real excited about having this to a formal situation of moving in one direction or another at this point. I'd like to see how the loan, the the rent negotiations go. And, you know, get that information back, or we can take a look at it certainly. But ultimately, it's going to take a while to get me up to a point where I want to give up that land. But I'm willing to listen, yeah.
Councillor Long and then councillor McLaughlin.
Yeah, I was just gonna point out something that not only is this an income-producing property, but it also increases in value. It is an asset for us. So we have to think about it that way, too. Maybe the cash flow isn't necessarily there, but we're not hurting as a city for cash flow. And I really think as a long-term asset, it is something that we should hold on to because of the location. And, you know, I I'm looking ahead fifty years, a hundred years. But I just wanted to point that out. It's not just the the rent that we're getting. It also is increasing in value.
I agree with that. Councillor McLaughlin?
I'm just looking at the potential. And we have a person here that's looking as an investment, and we don't want to, we don't want to move them to a point where they just reject or we just send a message that we're rejecting this. What I do want to see is more work on the negotiations, the amount of rent that's a potential, the compensation from the capital fund. That's the kinds of things. And then at that point, when I have more information, then I can make a decision, yay, to move ahead and sell or to retain it. Again, I'm more inclined to say retain it because I know the added advantage of having that state office in our community. And the location, I'm worried about the parking lot, you know, we lose that as well if we sell the entire property. So.
Right.
Okay, that that's that's all I need to say.
Okay. Mister Kara, did you want, yeah, did you want to say something?
Absolutely. I just wanted to keep in mind, I wanted to first respond to councillor Long, just very briefly, and mention building, you you know, you you definitely are correct, this is an asset. But when you say this is an asset, it's important to sort of clarify that land increases in value over time generally. Buildings don't, right? The buildings will will increase if we invest in them using capital improvements. But that all comes from the city's coffers under any new lease because the state's not reimbursing it. And just again, to reiterate with councillor McLaughlin's point, it's certainly, you know, is is not the desire of the state, the city, or me by bringing this to you for your consideration, for the state to leave. No one is hoping for the state to leave, least of all is the state and also any potential investor who looks at this valuation as, you know, a good, good investment. But mostly because of the state's there. And so there is no, no, the state isn't leaving. Just wanted to clarify that. That's all.
Understood.
The fact is, too, is that as a as an income-producing asset, we have chosen to put the money in separate, two separate funds. If we wanted to, we could put that money in the general fund if we wanted to. Isn't that right? Okay. If we ever needed to put it in the general fund, we could. Okay, anybody else? Is anybody in the audience who would like to brief, make some very brief remarks or ask a question? Mister Nichols?
I'm sorry, again, I just one point, though, should you happen to sell it, it will go on the tax rolls, which it hasn't been on for thirty years.
I hadn't considered that. That's a good point.
Small amount.
Perhaps Mister Kara and Miss Ms. Wilson or Julie, pursuant to that, you could you could present the city council with the estimated tax revenue that would be derived if we were to sell the building. Do you think you could do that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so that's two things it seems to me that you're going to be doing is getting that and also getting back to the council about an increased rent by the state to compensate us for capital expenses that we may make in the future. Is that right? Is everybody, is that the consensus I'm hearing?
If we're going, if you want Jonathan to continue negotiating the lease, that would be the information we would bring you back is we would provide you with whatever we negotiate with them and approve the leases that would include how we would pay and develop our capital improvement plan to maintain the building. It's like your county assessor might have an answer, too.
Yeah, the county assessor, and then I'll, Mister Braswell has his hand up as well. So Ms. Amory, or please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Jill Amory, your assessor for Wasco County. So just to clarify Mister Nichols' comment, if you sell to a private entity, but the state is still leasing, an exempt entity, it would still be exempt. Just to clarify.
Thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely.
Mister Braswell? We have to unmute you. Just the city clerk is in the process of unmuting you.
I'm sorry, Mayor, what was that name?
Justin Hurley Braswell. He has his hand raised, if he's pictured.
There he is, sorry.
There you go.
Hi, thank you. I actually, I just want to say that Mister Nichols is actually correct. We own several state buildings throughout the state of Oregon, and because we're a private entity, the state does pay taxi, property taxes on those. And every city that we own a DHS building in, in the state of Oregon, where on the tax roll. But more than that, I just wanted to let you guys all know that, you know, we're not coming to you, you know, asking you to sell this building because we think you have to sell it by any means. And I think that it is, clearly, that's why we're interested in it. But we also believe in the mission that DHS does. That's why we have so many of their buildings, and we've been building new ones for them. We have one coming online next week in Gresham, Oregon, actually, and one coming online in Clement Falls in a couple of months. We're a fourth-generation family business. It's, they're all Oregonians, and we just invest in government office and medical office on the West Coast. So when we heard through the grapevine that the tenant was looking at the negotiation of this lease and that it was possibly going to have an interest to sell, that's when we contacted and said that we would, like, we have a good relationship with them. We know how to manage their buildings, and they like us as their landlords. So that's really why we're coming to you. If that's not something that you guys choose to move forward with, of course, I understand that. But we would pay a fair price for that. And again, the property taxes would be something that wouldn't start becoming in your coffers.
So I trust from your statement that if we were to sell the building to, say, you or anybody, you would agree to have a stipulation in the lease that the state shall be a tenant. He's muted again.
Yeah, I mean, I could certainly negotiate that with Jonathan or how you wanted. I I would only tell you that we would pretty much only want the state to be a tenant, but that will impact the price, the appraisal value if you put a deed restriction on that, on that building. It'll be significantly less.
Thank you. I think it's critical that we keep the state as a tenant, although I'd like to see us negotiate a suitable rent to reimburse us for not being reimbursed for capital expenses.
And we wouldn't have any intention in having them be, not be the tenant, because that is who we have as tenants in our facilities, so.
Is that a duty, Mister Braswell, to give his address or anything, or can you, does Rubicon Investments suffice?
I think the title of suffice is.
Okay. Okay, any more discussion? Does the staff feel it has direction?
Mister Mayor, I was wondering, I I I feel like I have sufficient direction for a seat, but would you like me to bring these items back? Namely, the estimated tax revenue, although, you know, I I defer entirely to Jill, who who very, very kindly jumped in and gave us her take on whether or not this would be a tax-exempt entity or type of situation or not. But also, I I know I've been working with Mister Braswell, at least in theory, on exploring this idea. And Rubicon owns buildings populated entirely by the state of Oregon. You know, so I'm not too sure the extent to which these types of situations would result in a exempt tax situation or not. That's something we could look into. And the other aspect of it is the councillor McLaughlin wanted to see some of the increased rents and how they relate to the new leases. That's information that the finance director and I, I think I speak for her when I say we're happy to acquire if we can. Would you like that brought back as a discussion item? Or would you like that, or is there a consensus here to bring this forward as a public hearing?
I would say discussion, continue to discussion item, but I defer to the other five. How do you guys feel about that?
Discussion only for me. Discussion, discussion for me.
Okay. Thank you all very much for your time. I really do appreciate it.
Councillor Long?
I just have one last question. How did the information that this building might possibly get sold make it out in public before even council knew about that?
It happened through the tenant. The state is the one who told Rubicon. I guess they like Rubicon that much. But yeah, that's exactly who told them. It was the Department of Administrative Services.
Okay, anything else to come before the council on this matter? Anything else to come before the city council on any other matter, any other business before we adjourn? Okay, thank you all very much. Consider this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Rod.
Thank you.